The curriculum meeting for the public schools of Robinson County now will be called to order. And we ask our esteemed superintendent to bless this meeting.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we give thanks to you for this day, your creative goodness. We thank you for your divine presence, for your divine guidance and your divine intervention. We are leaning, trusting and depending on you. We thank you how you have blessed us in this academic school year. Please see us through to the end. We pray for our servicemen and women all over this world. We pray for world leaders. We ask that you will have your way. Thank you for the public schools of Robinson County. Continue to bless all of our employees, bless our students and our home. And now we ask that you will guide us in this meeting. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
We are really, really excited. In the past, we've heard a lot from K five schools. And we had an inkling, a yearning that we want to hear from our high schools. So that's why you're here today. And let me tell you the importance of this. A lot of times when we pass items on the agenda, many things are mentioned that those, there are some who may or may not on the board know what we're talking about. So this would give them a keen knowledge. And also the public of some things that are going on in high schools. And this will give you time to shine tonight. However, we're restricted in time. So the demon tonight is Dr. Carr. Because she is the time keeper and she would give you a two minute warning that you have two minutes left on your presentation. So it's about nine to 10 minutes. So Dr. Carr, I will yield to you, you are in charge.
So, good evening, Dr. Manuel, Superintendent Williamson and board members. Tonight I have the pleasure of letting these high school principals present to us and share all about what is going on in the high schools. Before we get started, I am going to ask Cindy to speak a little bit about what does it look like as far as the difference between middle and high school? Before we actually start having those high schools present.
Good evening. So there are two different versions of calculating school performance grades. And the high school has a little bit more information that goes into their school performance grade than an elementary and middle school. I'm going to start with the high school because it does have so much more than the elementary and middle. With your school performance grade, you know that there's 80% calculation on the proficiency of your reading, math one, math three, and your biology, as well as your ACT work keys combination, your grade level, not your grade level, your cohort graduation rate, year four instead of year five, and your EL proficiency, where they calculate the English learners advancements. And then the math course rigor, which is your students in grade 12 who have taken an advanced math course prior to grade 12. They take those numbers, they add up all of the numerators, all of the denominators, and they divide the numerators by the denominator and get your, not your school performance grade, but get the proficiency of the school based on those calculations and multiply that by point 80. And then after that, during the summer, EVOs calculates a 20% in that grade on growth. Whereas with your elementary schools, it's a little bit more simple. You have your reading, math and your science, grades five and eight. You take the numerator, add up everything on the numerator side, add everything on the denominator side from those three, as well as your ELP, which is your EL progress. And you divide the numerator by the denominator and multiply that by point 80. So the elementary and middle is far more simple than the high school. The high school has many more components to it than the elementary. Are there any questions, Dr. Manuel?
No question, just to comment on my part. So the high schools really have a lot of pressure on them, don't they?
They do, in many different areas. Not just a proficiency of grades for subject areas, but in graduation, as well as math, advanced math courses, ACT and work keys, combination and their EL progress.
Wow. So I don't know, that's probably why high school pressure was gray early. You think that's right?
Are y'all all gray yet? They're still not as gray as my husband, which is probably caused by me.
Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
But while she's coming up, I do want to thank the board members for coming. And we have members here that are not on the committee, but this shows how dedicated they are to improving teaching and learning. We really want to thank all of you. And I, I'm just going to give them a minute to just say hello. And we'll start with Mr. Gentry. Will you say hello to all those hardworking people back there? Start with Mr. Craig.
Thank you for coming. And Dr. Manuel was nice. Now, we were told Tuesday night to be at this meeting. And you needed to be at our meeting Tuesday night because she's the one told us. There's a couple of people not here. And I feel like they will show up or they had somewhere to be. Because she set a standard Tuesday night of coming to committee meetings, that you're expected to be here. And I think all these board members will attest to that. But it is important to be here. And thank you all for what you do. And thank you for being here too.
As we've already heard, there's a lot of factors involved in our program. And it's like our math programs and sciences. But I want to thank each and every one of you for the hard work you've done throughout the year. We've, Dr. Carr and I were talking Tuesday night about the greatest, great accomplishments we have made since we started the EL curriculum. We've come a long ways. And all I can say is to continue to communicate with the board. And we, it's going to be our responsibility to continue to provide what resources you need to be functional and successful. Thank you for everything.
Vivante?
Just thank y'all for being here and thank y'all for what y'all do for our students of Public Schools of Robinson County.
Mr. Chair?
I'd like to thank each and every one of you for being here. Thank you for the standards that you set at your school. Thank the board members for participating in this. And also allowing Dr. Williamson to hold you accountable and to do the job that the public schools is asking you to do. And from my knowledge, you're doing a fine job. I'm just, I'm on Dr. Williamson because the board expects him to hold you accountable because we're holding him accountable. And thank you for what you do.
I echo what's been said. And I do appreciate the board holding me accountable because I am holding everyone accountable, but it's for our students. And our students are responding to the higher standards, higher expectation. And we're just getting started. It's amazing. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank y'all for all you do. It's not about us, it's about our students. Finish line is pretty close for this year. We're going to get there with the Lord's help. Thank y'all.
I apologize for being late. There's a lot of road construction going on between Pembroke and here. So, but also I want to echo the sentiments that's been sent already. Thank you so much for your presence here. I can't imagine what you go through each day. I know it's a labor of love. And just always know that you have my support. But thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you, board members. And now, Dr. Carr?
So I'm going to turn it over to the high schools now. And so I'm going to ask each one to start coming up and presenting. And I'll keep that timer going.
Don't forget the timer.
I got the timer.
I've already been warned by Vivante. Okay, while they're coming up, Mr. Craig, how's the?
Well, I was late, Dr. Williamson, thank you. I was at the middle school track meet. And I'm going to brag, my grandson said, "Right now, the county record in the mouth." That's why I'm late.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Williamson, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Manuel and the board members. I'm Mr. Drew Davis. I'm the principal at PSRC Early College. We are excited. This, we are rounding out this year. Tomorrow, we will actually have our graduation. And so we will finish out the year. Today was our last day for our students. So we extend Godspeed to them for their summer vacation. Some questions, and I'm going to dive more into the purpose and what we do at Early College and our programs later on in the evening. But what I'd like to do right now is just kind of address some things with credit recovery, PSRC online, as well as literacy. So this year, what we had, we did have one student in our credit recovery in the fall who successfully completed that. We will have one other in the summer. And we are projected that they will successfully complete that. And we do offer a lot of courses on the RCC side that students can take. There are two sessions, and they begin in, late May. May 20th, the first session will begin. And then the second session will begin for that summer as well. Our rising juniors are able to participate in those on RCC. They can participate in NCVPS courses, as well as PSRC online. Some of the eighth graders that are coming in will take or can take our science or world history online, which is through PSRC online. So we do have some upcoming freshmen that will take those courses. Enhancing literacy at our school has been a wonderful, rewarding challenge. This year, we did implement our Common Lit. And we also implemented our Socratic seminars. Students have got a love for reading like no other. I think that just seeing our English II scores and what they were, as well as our Common Lit assessments, which we'll talk about later when we get to our panel. But it's growing. Students are reading, our books are flying out of the book vending machine monthly. We're having to replace them. So even at high school level, those students, they really do have a love and enjoy for reading. So to address that literacy component. Going back to the PSRC online and NCVPS, some of the courses that we cannot offer, we do offer through NCVPS. Some of those include our foreign languages that might be needed for four-year universities. And so we do see an uptrend in our students who take those courses through NCVPS so that they can fill those requirements to go to the four-year university. But any questions at this time?
I have a couple just comments. The vending machines, students, the students have to buy the book?
So with the vending machines, they're actually giving tokens for things that occur on campus. And we implement that through our MTSS as well. They're given a token where they can actually go to the vending machine and use it to get a book. It could be something that didn't happen instruction-wise in the classroom. A child does better on a test, or a child just does a good deed around campus. They're given a token and that they can put that in the vending machine and they can get a book. And so it's really kind of been great for our MTSS as well because students are excited and want to get those tokens so that they can go to the vending machine and get a book.
Good. And have you selected your children for next year?
Yes, ma'am.
And they've been alerted that they've been accepted and all that kind of stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And one more question. Have you had any reason to refer any children to RAS, LAB, whatever you want to call it?
No, ma'am.
That's good. Are you happy where you are?
Very much so.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Manuel, if I may. So Andrew, next year cohort group is, how many students?
Eighty plus.
Eighty plus students coming in. The community college and Dr. Singler did give us an additional classroom. So we want to say thank you to her and the college for that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Questions? I'm sorry, anybody have any question? We have a lot of questions. Raise your hands and this young man's operating.
Can you explain the process, how you get into the Early College? Sort of what's going on, Stan? Or is that later?
It was later. Yes, yes, sir. You want me to wait or you want me to? Okay.
I know that one of the last times I had an opportunity to talk with you was just before there were going to be some, some repairs, but also some remodeling in certain areas, in certain buildings. How was that going?
It's, the repairs were made that we needed. And I will also discuss that as well later on when I come back to the panel, to the podium. But yes, sir.
And I know you'll want to say the second question, but one of the goals of students at Early College, in addition to getting a high-quality education and challenging courses, is also to earn college credit. And I'm sure, well, you may have in your mind a general figure in terms of percentages of students that on a year-to-year basis actually earn college credit and have it applied to their, to their college curriculum. I know that fluctuates and not every student accomplishes that. But I would say the majority.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We'll just rest with that.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Somebody else have to.
Mr. Drew, my question was going to be around, give us some expectation or some, some information on if you know, how many students Early College has grown in the last three to four years?
Wow.
And what to expect in the future as far as growth in Early College?
Yes, sir. And I will discuss that a little more later on. But we have grown probably by nearly, after next year, over 60 to 65 additional students from the previous two years ago. So roughly going from 200 to about 270.
Mr. Davis, just a quick question. How many do you have graduating?
Oh, tomorrow we have 59.
Out of, how many was in the senior class? In that senior class?
Well, so with us, because some of our seniors who are 12th graders will not be graduating, they'll be within the five-year cohort. We have 13th and 12th graders graduating. So it's a mixture of both.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Dr. Carr?
Good afternoon, Chairman Lawson, Dr. Manuel, Dr. Williamson, board members. My name is Anthony Barton. I'm the principal at Fairmont High School. To speak to some of the questions that we were asked to bring some information on, the first one I'd like to speak to is credit recovery. We use a program called Apex here in the public schools of Robinson County. That's primarily the vessel we use in summer school. But we also use it at Fairmont High School during the school year after school. So we've had 50 additional students besides the ones last summer that made up at least one course. And some of those have made up more than one. When it comes to NCVPS and PSRC online, in the fall, we had 53 students that took fall classes, 41 students in the spring, for a total of 94. We have 39 students that have signed up for classes so far. We're currently advertising those. And students have until next Friday to sign up. NCVPS, we really use NCVPS to help service our OCS students. So our EC teachers that work with our OCS students aren't highly qualified in each subject area. So NCVPS really fills a gap for us when it comes to math, science and English. So we had 59 students in the fall that took NCVPS classes, 61 students in the spring, for a total of 120 students. We're currently advertising for some of our students to take NCVPS classes this summer. When it comes to literacy in high school, anything in high school that you want students to like, you have to make it relevant to them. So outside of the parameters of Common Lit, trying to find literature that students enjoy to read. When I think about English, information, language and literature are the, are the primary areas. And so trying to, we really work to try and find texts that will complement Common Lit, but also make it interesting. One of the things I want to focus on next year is having our media center to be more of the hub of the school. So I was talking with Mr. Bobby earlier in the school year. And we're going to do some work in our media center and getting our classes into the media center. Media center should be the hub. And it hasn't, and it hasn't been the hub this year. I will also speak to the vending machines. You'd be surprised that students do read and they do want to get those books, as long as they are books that, that are relatable to them. So we've done, Ms. Martin, who's my media specialist, has done a good job on ordering and surveying kids on what they want. So to put it in there so they can, of course, be interested in it. Also, this may be a little middle-schoolish. I was a middle school principal for six years. But I believe the media specialist should spend some time in classrooms, as well as getting kids into the classrooms. So Ms. Martin's going to be doing some of that next year, really advertising what she has to offer inside the media center to be able to enhance the love of reading for our students.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
How many children, guesstimate, if you don't have a number, did you send to RAS? Or it could be for credit recovery and/or just to keep them from dropping out?
Oh, right, right.
How did you use the RAS program or LAB, whichever one you used?
So we used RAS. I only have three students currently at RAS, I think. All three of those are ninth grade students. As far as LAB, I think we have 12 students, Mr. Matt. Would that be, would that be about right? 12 students that are currently on the LAB side at RAS. And so all of those students that want to graduate on time as a result of what's happened for them at LAB, would you have one student that is going to be a summer grad? And he knew that going over there. But had it not been for what they were able to do at LAB, on the RAS side, under Mr. Matt's leadership, those students may not have graduated on time.
Appreciate you using the program for what it's intended for.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions, board members?
The last thing I'll say, also, we've already identified about 100 students that are welcome to come to summer school this year for credit recovery, either being a class that they need to make up or more than one to help keep them on track and make progress to a graduation.
You like being a high school principal?
I love being a high school principal.
Okay.
And he's at my school, Doc.
Is he?
I really like Fairmont. It's a good place. He does.
Yeah.
Okay. What do you think about all that sports?
I enjoy it. I enjoy it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a question for Mr. Gentry.
Yes, Mr. Gentry. This is not a question, it's a statement. Anthony was a student teacher, life assistant principal at South Robinson High School.
Oh.
I'd like to claim a little credit.
Yes, sir.
Where he is now.
You can have the credit. It's okay, Dr. Williamson doesn't mind. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, board members. My name is Larry Brooks. I'm the principal at Lumberton High School. So we're credit recovery at our school in Apex. How many students have completed credit recovery? Currently, we have 164 courses that have been completed. And we have about 30 students currently enrolled in credit recovery. For NCVPS in the fall, we had 50 occupational students in the fall and one non-OCS student in the spring. For PSRC online, we had 77 in the fall. And in the spring, we had 109. And then this past summer, we had 161 students enrolled in PSRC online. What are we offering this summer? We're going to offer all core classes that are, that students will need to graduate. So all four core classes will be offered. All this information is going to be dependent upon our exam grades as well. We're looking from anywhere from 100 to 150 students in summer school. Hopefully, 150 show up. We've been telling students, even if you fail one class, this is your opportunity to come in and make that class up, that way don't get further behind. And then hopefully that's something maybe that can promote them on to the next grade level as well. We currently have one student enrolled in NCVPS this summer. And we have 18 enrolled in PSRC online coming, going forward this summer. How do we enhance literacy and develop the love of reading at Lumberton High School? Every teacher is a teacher of literacy at Lumberton High School. Teachers help develop skills, literacy skills through various learning activities that are appropriate for each subject area that students would need to be successful in the workforce, college or military. Lumberton High School, we've got a great media coordinator and her assistants in there. They do a good job of getting students in and out of the library and checking out books. She offers flexible scheduling where teachers drop in. And students, teachers use our library a lot with their students. And over the past three years, Lumberton High School has checked out 12,398 books to students. So Ms. Lydia does an excellent job in our media center.
Guys, I read that Franklin County is taking all their media specialists and putting them in the classroom next year. That's something, isn't it? So I guess you could interpret it, I don't know the reason, but you may know more than I do about it. Have you heard about it?
I know about it, but I don't know why.
Yeah. But that, that tells you something. I hope it's not that they don't see the value of a media specialist. Maybe it's, maybe it's teacher shortage or something. But it's something to think about.
Ms. Lydia is our IT person too. I mean, she's our troubleshooter for everything, technology. When students come in there with a laptop.
Yeah.
Or Chromebooks.
But anyway, let me get back to some more support programs. How do you feel about children going to LAB, RAS and dropout prevention? Talk to us about that because you have a big school with children with a lot of needs.
We always send usually around 10 students per semester to LAB, RAS on the other end, depending on behavior. So I think this year, we may have sent 20 some, maybe 20-plus students to RAS as first semester and second semester combined.
Do you think you could, it might be something that you could use more to help you out some?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I wouldn't want to see it go away. I said I wouldn't want to see it go away. Yeah, we need, we need RAS.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
We've had several students that went to RAS first semester and came back second semester. I got one person in particular, I won't call his name, but he's came back a much better student, much better person, that one person in particular.
Well, you have your hands full with that large number of students. Well, you have your hands full with that large number of students, and you to be commended.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody have any questions, comments, board members?
I have a comment. Ms. Brooks, you know, I'm close by geographically. It doesn't take me long to get from my house to Lumberton Senior High School, and I've had the privilege of walking the hall with you and sometimes just on my own. And I have been very impressed with the behavior of your students.
Thank you.
I'll get new classes another time.
We got a good administration team. I've been lucky for the people we've got employed with us, too. Went third round of softball playoffs, too. I'm going to mention that, too, since I'm up here.
Mr. Brooks, I can appreciate your comment that you made about the improvement of the student, because I know at one time we were, as a board, we were questioning, we have repeats going back into these programs, and we, the concern is, are they, are they learning to do better? Or is it recreational more than educational? And it sounds like you've you've turning some of them around to make it more educational.
Right. Mr. Matt does a wonderful job at, I mean, LAP and RAS in preparing those students to come back to us.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Dr. Carr? What, Ben? That's right. She's in charge. Mm-hmm.
Hello, Dr. Manuel, Dr. Williamson, board members.
Excuse me, I'd like to inform everyone that Jason has a new suit on. So please come in on how he looks tonight.
Not the same, no. I got twenty-three.
You got twenty-three soon?
Yes, ma'am.
Crazy. Wow.
I got one for every day of the month. I mean, every day during the month if I want to wear it.
Super in Canada. He's got you, B. He's got you, B.
Well, you got to remember where he where he comes from, St. Paul Joe's Suggers.
There you go.
Super didn't ask comment.
We might better check the facts.
I'll take a picture of it tonight in the closet. My name is Jason Suss, Principal, St. Paul's High School. Just to give you some information, how many students are in NCVPS, PSRC online this year? NCVPS, one thing we had to use it for this year was our OCS students to make sure they have a highly qualified teacher. We had a hundred and thirty-seven enrolled in the fall, and PSRC online, forty of them dropped, so ninety did get credit. In the spring, we had a hundred and fifty-eight enrolled, thirty-eight ended up dropping, so we ended up having a hundred and twenty in the spring that will that will receive credit. So we definitely use PSRC online, especially those courses that are very hard to staff. And like I said, Spanish is one of the biggest ones, at probably two-thirds to even more than two-thirds of our students who are in online are taking Spanish. So what are you offering this summer? We're going to offer a full slate of PSRC courses. They're going to be there, all the core classes. How many students will be enrolled in credit recovery? That's for the summer. We have, we don't know just yet. That's going to depend, of course, how they do this semester. But our thing is to try to get that number down, but we do anticipate a little over a hundred. How do you work to enhance literacy and develop love for reading at your school? We work to enhance literacy by the developing of love of reading at St. Paul's High School, providing students support with books of varying levels of interest in the media center and also through the book vending machine that has been discussed. We have books in the lockers. We have actually taken the lockers that that kids do not buy anymore and have transformed those into basically bookstores. We have full class sets of books in those lockers, and those are, they can actually keep them, or they can use to read them or return. So either one. Students also encouraged to join our award-winning Battle of Books team, three times our last four years' champion.
Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. And also, teachers do allow time for students to enjoy reading in class, because every teacher is a teacher of reading.
Mr. Jason, you, two things. You said forty dropped. Why were these students dropping these courses?
Various reasons. Some of them end up having work, ends up being a little bit harder than what they thought. So we ended up putting them back in the class second semester instead of doing it online. But it's the very reasons.
And you you guys are using an acronym that some of the board members may not know, the NCVP. Will you tell them what that is?
North Carolina Virtual Public School.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any board members have a comment, question? Everybody happy? Mr. Jason, they let you off the hook. Oh, I have a question.
I was going to say, I'm waiting. Now, hold on now. I was about to feel offended you to ask me the questions now.
I'm about to ask you. What about RAS and LAP? What's your philosophy of letting children use it in order to stay in school, and your numbers will reflect your philosophy?
Well, I will say this. One, somebody taught me a long time ago, students need multiple opportunities to succeed. I can't remember who that was, but I think I remember, and I think I'm pointing at them right now. But our numbers, honestly, now, RAS, we didn't have, we got nine total, nine total for the year in RAS. But now for LAP, it was seven, because our thing is, like I said, I don't know my numbers off. That's, hey, Mr. Matt's the man. But the thing is, what we try to do is try to get them before they need that, before they get too far behind. But when they do get behind, of course, we're going to use RAS. I mean, excuse me, we're going to use LAP for the simple fact that we're trying to get those kids everything they need to be successful.
They use Apex?
Yes.
They use Apex. I guess the only thing I'm saying is, I hope your dropout rate is not reflecting not the use of not using LAP or RAS.
Our graduation rate dipped last year for the first time below ninety percent since I've been at St. Paul's High School. Our graduation rate.
What do you attribute that to? Just, and not putting you on the spot. I'm just curious.
It's once again, a social worker who, I'll tell anybody, I got the best social worker in the county. She stays on people. Matter of fact, I have people call and say stuff like, you need to get that social worker. Well, what happened? She keeps calling me, harassing me about my child. Was the child coming to school? Well, no, they missed a lot of days. Well, have the child come to school. I promise you won't never call you. But now that's the main one. She is, she's on it. She gets them. But also, like I said, about getting those kids early. We met with every senior this semester, or excuse me, first semester, who was not in danger of not graduating because of classes. We met with every one of them, told them, hey, listen, this is what you got to do to graduate, told them about taking some online classes or whatever they need to go in and get them prepared. So that way, it's no surprise at the end of the year, we've been meeting with you since August. And that's the key. You got to get them early. You can't wait till May and say, oh, my goodness, we forgot somebody.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Okay.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Jason. And you do look nice.
Good afternoon, board members. Dr. Williamson, my name is Carla Wyler. I'm the principal of Purnell Swett High School. Today, I'd like to discuss with you the number of students that completed credit recovery, North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, and PSRC online this year. So this school year, we had over approximately two hundred students that received credit from credit recovery. We had approximately sixty-one students from the North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, and part of that number was our occupational students. PSRC online, we have approximately two hundred and ninety-two students. And the North Carolina School of Math and Science, we had thirteen students that participated with that. This summer, we will be offering courses through PSRC online, where we have approximately three hundred and sixty-eight students already registered to take classes. We have seven students that's already registered to take classes through the North Carolina Virtual Public School. And based on last year's numbers in summer school, we will be approximately around two hundred and twenty-five students. The way Purnell Swett High School works to enhance literacy and develop a love for reading in our school, we have classroom libraries within our English classes. That's not every one, but we have classroom libraries within there where a student can do independent reading on books of, you know, their choices. Teachers also use Newsela around, especially like with the social studies and ELA, because Newsela is aligned to the standards, so they use articles that are relevant to what they are teaching within the classroom. And we as well have the book vending machine. But we also, instead of throwing away books, when Mr. Wong goes through the library and discards books, we put them in carts and push them into the hallways, and we allow students just to go and pick whatever book they want as they're changing, you know, classes. And also, students are allowed to go to the library and check out books, because we order classroom sets of books where they, or novels that students could go and check books out. So at Purnell Swett High School, that's what we do.
Oh, we'll go to the board first. Anybody have any comments, questions? I want to ask you the same thing. How has, if it has, RAS and LAP helped your dropout rate if your students stay in school?
All right. I I I'm sure you could probably, I suppose the running joke used to be that we kept, we kept LAP in business. So quite naturally, I believe in second chances. You know, I know a lot of times that, you know, students, especially during the transition years, coming from middle school to high school, students experience a lot of, you know, issues that goes on. It sort of gets them behind. And so as they, you know, move on up, you know, with their cohort, or really they're sort of left behind, you know, we use LAP as that opportunity to be able to catch them up so that they can graduate, you know, on time. So I'm a huge firm believer, you know, in LAP. And we do utilize RAS. We have a, we had approximately maybe six students this year that was assigned to RAS. We currently have two that are there, and I find that RAS, like Mr. Brooks said, has made that, you know, difference, you know, in students once they return back to the school.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody comment, Mr. Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Leibner. And this is really to everybody, because I was waiting till all the principals finished. Folks, when we were all in school, you went and took your classes, and if you didn't pass to do the work there, that was it. You didn't have these programs. And, you know, I'm listening to everybody singing from the same page. And I have to read it, credit recovery, NCVPS, online, summer programs, whatever. If a kid is having problems, we got ways that they can finish high school. And and I would like to to encourage, if you don't use LAP or don't use RAS, please use it. That's why it's down there, down there. If you've got kids misbehaving, they're taking learning away from a student in the classroom, and I've always said that's not right. And so if you need to use that, use it. LAP, sometimes kids just need to be in a different environment. So.
Smaller setting.
A smaller setting or what have you. So we've got these programs in place to be used, and from what you folks are telling us, they are being used. When Mr. Matt gets up here, I'm going to ask him something about his program, but I'll wait till he gets here. But I hear good things, you know, kids go there, come back, and, you know, all of them might not be behaving better, but a lot of them are. But thank you all for what you're doing.
Thank you. Y'all are going to have an assignment after Red Springs. I think that would be the end of the regular schools, but after Red Springs presents, you're going to have an assignment. So I asked the high school principal not to leave after Red Springs. I have a distinguished board member who just walked in, and we want to give her, the socialist, a chance to say something warm and friendly and whatever she wants to to our high school guests tonight. Miss Oceanus, we all did it. Every one of us said something sweet to them, so it's your chance. And it was just thanking them what they've done, so we give you your chance now. Thank you for coming. We're waiting on you. Yeah, yeah.
Good afternoon, all of you. I hope everybody's doing well. I want to first say thank you for everything that you do. I know that being in the high school environment is not easy, but I think that you all are doing an amazing job. I don't have a high school in my in my district, per se, but I get amazing reports from, about all of you. You're you're a major factor in the, in shaping the lives of these young individuals. You're giving them the platform where they, you know, go forward. You're setting standards, and I just appreciate you for it in everything that you do, every day that you get up and go and give your best. I I want to say thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Say thank you, Miss Oceanus. You can tell these are not my students. Okay, Mr. Red Springs.
Good evening, Dr. Williamson, Dr. Emmanuel, and the rest of our board members. I'm here today to talk to you about some information regarding Red Springs High School. Our enrollment right now is approximately eight hundred and forty-two students for credit recovery this year. We currently have sixty-four students that have completed credit recovery via Apex Learning. And this summer, that will be our offering for our students in order for them to recover credits that they have maybe missed throughout the school year. And so we'll be offering all of our core courses and then electives that we are waiting to see that will be available via the Apex platform. For PSRC online this year, in the summer of last year, we had a hundred and fifty-one students take advantage of the program. In the fall, we had eighty-nine, and in the spring, we had eighty. So and speaking with the students and sharing our meetings that we've had with them, we have a good amount of them that are planning to take some courses as well this summer. NCVPS, we primarily use it at Red Springs High School for our OCS classes. So we had a total of forty-two students take advantage of NCVPS this school year. As far as literacy and enhancing the literacy across the building, we are pushing that forward next year, more so with our media center specialist, Ms. Bird. She has built our library, as others have said, with text that interests our students. And so with that, making sure that inside of our schedule, that we have times for all of our ELA and social studies classes in particular to visit and to have experiences with her leading that instruction within the media center. Additionally, this year, we are, we have been taking our credit recovery at some of the other schools and kind of getting our students to complete it during the school day and trying to utilize our partnership with community and schools. And they have been doing a really good job of kind of keeping up with the students, making sure that they're completing the courses on their own time to make sure that they are recovering those credits. And the last thing that I will add for all of the high school principals is that we do have summer graduation on June twenty-eighth at nine AM at Lumberton Senior High School.
I have a question. The communities in schools, you said they help you, the students with credit recovery?
Yes, ma'am.
What do they come in during the day? Is there a certain period they come in? How does that work?
So they're there all during the day, and what they are doing is, when a student is in an elective such as PE, they will pull that student, kind of check in on their progress and help making sure that they have someone that's checking on them regularly to make sure that they're completing the course in the amount of time that they have.
Have you been able to use LAP, RAS to keep kids in school?
Yes, ma'am. Well, we haven't. So this year, we've had four total students at RAS. So I think that's a testament to the school and the work that has been going on there in terms of a student is just displaying a certain behavior that we intervene in order to make sure that that behavior doesn't continue. And at LAP, we have six students, but I think that's a credit to, again, we're utilizing during the day and with the people that we have on campus to try to keep them from getting to the point where they need to go to LAP.
But you do not have a problem using either of those programs to help the kids stay in school to graduate, do you?
No, ma'am. The major part of my educational philosophy is every student can be successful if you give them the right opportunities. And so that's just another opportunity for them to be successful. Everything doesn't work for every person.
What is your biggest challenge taking on a high school?
I think the biggest challenge is just kind of making sure that all the different moving parts take place. I think someone said it before, that at high school, it's a bigger task than the middle school and elementary school because of the different aspects that are there. However, I think that with the people that I have on my team at our school, it makes it a little bit easier to try to make sure all those things get done.
You'll be all right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments? We have Mr. Gentry and Mr. Brewer. Anybody on that side? Mr. Terry, you're mighty quiet. Now, are you all right?
Mr. Sinclair, our budget, our budget for textbooks, we've seen a decline in years now. Each year, it's declining. I'm going to ask your opinion, and I've heard all all the schools mention media specialists and doing a great job. What is your thoughts or feelings around the newer way of technology? When it comes to books, is these books? when it comes to books? Is these books, uh, is, is it like it used to be traditional? Where you check out books and you sign them back in and, and somebody else checks them out again? Or do you get, uh, uh, workbooks that, you know, you can scribble in? And when you finish the course or whatever, those books are yours and they can take it with them? Uh, what, what's your thinking of, on what's happening in the revolution of change?
Um, so at a high school, we still have the circulation there. So kids are still able to check in, check out books, check them back in and kind of go through that part. Um, I think that over time, as, uh, not only students increase, but everyone's increasing technology, the value of that book actually been in their hands has decreased as well, but that value has not went down. It is still valuable to have books inside the students' hands to have them be able to experience different things. Speaking from personal experience, um, growing up in Red Springs and being in Robinson County, I feel like I got a perception of how the rest of the world worked based on the fact of how, what I read in books. So books exposed me to the rest of the world, and I feel like that is still valuable and regardless of what technology is out there.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want to come? Mr. Gentry? And I think Mr. Terry did too, didn't he?
Mr. Sinclair, I've, I've had the opportunity of coming over and, uh, meeting you formally. And, uh, I appreciate your, your hospitality and, uh, and you, uh, gave me the leeway to just walk around the school, which I appreciated and, and met another, a number of, of your staff and, uh, and got acquainted with some. And there really seems to be a high level of collegiality among, among your staff. But, but I wanted to ask you two questions. Uh, if, if I'm not mistaken, you came to Red Springs High School not long after we reconvened, uh, from COVID, I'll say, and the, and the structure that was going on in terms of instruction. Am I pretty much on target? It was, was not too long after we came back. Were you at St. Paul's?
Yes, sir. Uh, maybe during probably most of COVID. But the que- question I want to ask and, and that, uh, with, with all of the, uh, different, uh, methods of instructional delivery, uh, that we have now, which are, which are wonderful, and LAP and RAS, uh, have been mentioned, uh, a number of times. And, and I, I guess the question is twofold. Uh, how have you found the, uh, the demeanor of middle school students versus high school students in their, uh, receptivity to learning and, 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 and coming back from a difficult situation where virtually everything, all the instruction was online, and now they have all of these opportunities, uh, within the, the, the building itself? How have you seen the, the effectiveness in terms of, of, of learning among the students of, of behavior, taking advantage of opportunities, all of that, just the overall demeanor of, of students, uh, having come back, uh, out of a COVID situation where they were, uh, obviously, uh, away from the building? And now they've, they've got these opportunities, have, have majority of them capitalized on that and, and thrived in terms of access to all that they have now?
Um, I think with anything, it, it was a kind of a grace period. We had to give it. Um, but I was just having a conversation earlier this week with my administration team. And we were talking about how, um, our graduating class of twenty twenty-four, um, they had a difficult start in high school, um, with, during the middle of COVID. Um, but now all the other students seem to be real adjusting, I think, the district, um, by us adopting the curriculums and things and giving them exposure to those in middle school. And then in that, that part is just shifting all the way over. And you see students now kind of getting back in pace and getting back on board with things that are happening in school. And then with our curriculums having that online component, I think that just blended well with what they had to kind of encounter whenever they went out with COVID.
One more follow-up?
Yes, sir.
I noticed ads do a lot of our, I'm going to say all of our high schools now have, uh, an outdoor classroom. And, uh, I, I noticed when I was there that, uh, and I think you reiterated that to me, that, uh, a, a lot of the classes are utilizing on weather permitting days, uh, likely to have their classes outside. I, I'm sure they're enjoying that. It may increase productivity.
Yeah, it, it has been, um, an added plus to our campus, um, to be able to take those students out of that environment. I think that was another effect of COVID being kind of stuck in their house and doing things like that. So having them be able to come out, just kind of take that mental break, go out and be able to have class out there and the whiteboards are there. So teachers can still facilitate instruction the way they need to.
Uh, I'm getting to time, but I do have to call Mr. Terry because he's had his hand up. Last two presenters. Okay, Mr. Terry.
Mr. Sinclair, this, this question is not necessarily directed toward you. I'm, I apologize for you being at the podium while I have to ask this, but Dr. Emanuel called me out, so I'm, I'm forced to. So, but, um, I'm just interested in learning more about, and this may be a, a question for the, the administration. If a student, uh, it's my understanding that you don't have to attend to early college to earn a two-year or an associate's degree, correct?
Somebody would have to answer that other.
So, I mean, you can be at a high school and earn an, an associate's degree?
Yes.
Um, are all principals, or is there a standardized practice or a standardized way in which we're promoting that, uh, for, for students?
Yes, and we actually have a representative from RCC that's on campus. And so we, we, I think I speak for everybody, we've been very flexible with them in terms of what things that you need to happen for the kids to be successful in their class. Um, for us, we provided a space for them that they may be enrolled in two extra classes for CCP. And we provide a space for them in fourth period for them to come and complete those courses instead of them getting early dismissal or things like that and going home. So with that and with the facilitator in the room, it makes them a lot more, um, feasible, feasible to, for them to gain that credit. Um, and I think, again, we all promote that part. We want our kids to get as much as possible because we know the value of a two-year degree is high now, um, and much higher now than it was in the past.
I'm asking this question because I guess in the last couple of weeks, um, seniors, uh, that are, that are going to college or have received their bills, you know, for, for their tuition in the fall. And I think some parents, um, some of the parents are having sticker shop. And, and I'm thinking, um, you know, if we can capitalize on those, on those credits that they can earn through, through the community college, that'll save parents a lot of money. And, um, the, the more that we can do to promote those programs, even outside of the early college, uh, the better. And if there's anything that the board can do to, to support those efforts, uh, please, uh, please let us, let us know. I'd love to, um, talk a little bit more about what we can do to ensure that, uh, all of our students, even if they do not attend in the, the early college, have opportunity to those courses, not only to enhance their experience, uh, but also save their parents some money.
That might be, Mr. Terry, that might be something Ms. Jaddell could incorporate with her counseling program, some kind of schedule where they announce that or work with that or something. Because that's a good point, I think.
And I think too, just to go along with that real quickly, um, to talk about the cost factor. Um, and Mr. Dell's counseling department has been doing a good job of trying to make sure that all their students, um, get their FSA ID and make sure that they complete their FAFSA because one misconception we saw with our students is that they think that FAFSA only applies to those four-year schools and it doesn't apply to two-year. And it does. And so we've been doing a good job of trying to push that out to even, they didn't take advantage of the CCP classes while they were in co- um, high school, that they still have the opportunity to go and cost is not the factor.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we have another distinguished board member who just came in and we had to travel from somewhere. So we're glad to hear it. Mr. Trey. We have had, uh, all of our board members have addressed the high school people and, you know, just said, thank them for what they're doing. So now we, it is your turn, last but most important you.
Firsthand, I know what y'all go through every day. Obviously, for twelve years at Lummerton, hats off. You gotta wear many a hats during the day's time. Numerous things, but I certainly appreciate all that y'all do and always a phone call away if you need me.
Thank you, Mr. Trey. Okay, the regular high school principals. You just presented and you did a great job. You answered a lot of questions and maybe we're having the background that you gave us today when we make decisions, we can think about some of the things you told us and some of the needs that we heard coming from you tonight in your presentation. You did a great job. We're going to give you a hand for that. Now, we know we're not finished. We're going to the specialty areas, but we're asking the high school principals tonight. I want you to write down in just a couple of simple sentences, one of the most tremendous things that has happened to your schools this year that you want to highlight. Miss Jessica is going to write a story about that. One of the most things, positive things that's happened at your school. Now, you can be doing it quietly while the other, the rest of the presentations happen. And we were yielding back down to Dr. Carr. Do not leave. You can't leave till you write the most generous thing that's happened at your school. I mean, it's just, you would just highlight it. You would, you'd like to call the president, tell him about it. And we're going to ask Miss Jessica to write a story. Might, it might be, your story might be this week, next week, next month, this summer. And Miss Jessica, we hope she'll follow up and get us a good story on those wonderful things that, uh, have happened in our high schools. And we yield to early college. So what happens now? Uh, Dr. Carr, what happens now?
So.
Okay.
So just, uh, just real quick to piggyback from Mr. Locklear, the CCP program does allow students their junior year to participate and take RCC classes. They can get up as many credit hours as they can. Uh, we actually did have a young lady from Fairmont last year, um, complete all of the credits to earn her associate's degree through the CCP program. So that can be done as well.
Okay.
So, but, um, just real quick, so early college, um, the purpose of it, of early college is to allow high school students with parents who did not continue education beyond high school or high school students who would benefit from an accelerated academic instruction, the chance and the ability to be able to complete an associate's degree in arts or associate of science or CTE pathway certificate within four years of them graduating high school. Which means that when they leave our program, um, at eighteen years old, they will walk into a four-year university with two years of college under their belt and could potentially graduate with a four-year degree within two years of them entering. Um, over eighty percent of those students who leave us actually get scholarships to finish out the last two years. So, um, they could actually potentially get the whole four-year university degree paid for, um, once they leave us. But, um, just to kind of give you a little bit of insight too, we are of what I like to call the melting pot of the district. We have students from all across every single region coming to our school. Um, we have students who participate in sports. We, uh, have students who participate in art, uh, ROTC, band, orchestra. These are just some new initiatives that we brought on this year. Uh, one of the things that, um, I'm most proud of is about the number, like we talked about, um, coming in with our new ninth grade cohort. We were able to secure another, uh, teaching position as well as another classroom like Dr. Williamson mentioned. And, uh, at RCC's campus, I was able to actually talk with President Sinclair, um, who asked, said to me, um, one of the working, one of her joint strategic priorities for this year, um, is to work jointly with PSRC to build a new facility for RCC's campus. The current facility is at capacity and has reached the end of life, limiting enrollment growth and potential for programming options. Building a new facility on RCC's campus will allow for continued enrollment growth and increase access to state-of-the-art programming and services for students. So I'm excited that we're starting this conversation with RCC in collaboration. Um, she wants to get rid of the mobile units that we're in currently. They are on their last leg at almost twenty years old, coming up in two thousand twenty-five. So we are excited about the potential for growth physically, um, on RCC's campus. So.
Anyone have any comments, questions, uh, Mr. Terry?
You mentioned there was one student from Fairmont, um, that was able to complete their, uh, two-year degree last year. Do we have any, any other, uh, numbers associated with that?
Um, well, I know that that was a huge feat for somebody who was doing CCP. Because with CCP, of course, they spend half of their time at the high school and then half of their time on RCC's campus. Um, I don't specifically know from each of the other high schools how many have done that. I know they've completed a lot of, of classes, which are college transfer. Um, but actually completing the associate's degree, no, sir, I don't know.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Ms. Brewer?
Mr. Drew, um, I know it's been a, a tough job for you and your staff, uh, going through a selection process. Can you just highlight, uh, I understand there's a lot of factors involved in how you are selecting students. Can you just highlight some of the things that can give our parents and, and our, our neighborhood, uh, the understanding of how students, what students have to do to qualify to get an RCC?
So s- s- the students, we look at grades, we look at, uh, behavior, we look at discipline records, attendance, um, EOC, EOG scores, counselor recommendations, teacher recommendations. Um, we also en- ensure to be equitable when it comes to demographics as well as middle schools. Um, I pride myself on being able to say that I chose students from every single one of our PSRC middle schools, um, this year. And so there, there is, there is a lot of factors that go into play, but it's not one thing. No, sir, it's not just academic. And we do have a lot of social emotional needs at our school. Uh, and so a lot of the students who do come to us, um, that factors in as well, um, and the percentages of students that we bring in. And so it's no, sir, it's not just academics. You're correct.
Oh, Ms. John Simmons?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So, so students at our schools can actually participate at their local high school for athletics. Um, they do have to provide transportation because we do not have buses that run to the high school after, after school. Um, but they are allowed to participate in any sport. This year we had students participating in football, volleyball, basketball, soccer. Um, one of, I believe, uh, for Lummerton High School, one of their starting running backs was coming from our school. Um, also a girl's soccer at Purnell Sweat. We had three stars on, on Purnell Sweat's team as well as, uh, St. Paul's volleyball team. So we have a lot of students who participate in sports and a variety of sports all across the district, in both semesters, in fall and in spring. And so, yes, sir, they are allowed to participate in sports, no problems. Clubs and activities, yes, they are allowed to participate. Like I said, we have ROTC, we have art, we have, uh, Christian club, robotics club. We have a variety of clubs, um, throughout the campus, which are allowed to do Club Day, which we do that once a month. Um, those clubs include Beta Club, Key Club, Save Club. So there's just a variety of clubs and organizations that students can choose to be a part of. One of the things that we do require is every student has to join at least two clubs on our campus, uh, to be a part of. We have probably one of, if not the largest, uh, Beta Club in our district. Uh, we send a lot of students to the state and national competitions. We are actually sending two or three this year, um, and they're going on their own, but we will have representation from PSRC at the National Beta Convention this summer.
Uh, we need to move on because we have a pa- okay, Mr. Craig. You want to come in, Mr. Craig? Okay, wait a minute.
Uh, real quick, there, uh, you have to apply to go to early college entering your ninth grade year, right?
Correct.
And I, and I'm saying that because I still get questions every once in a while. Parent wants their child to go to early college and they're going into the eleventh grade or they're going into the tenth grade. So I'm just saying that, that I know we put that out, but make sure we keep putting that out. Mr. Terry, to answer your question, part of it, we, we've had students, I think, scattered over the county. Now, I can't tell you numbers. They might have eighteen hours in college credit. There was a student, I think, at Purnell Sweat the other year. They had two years. So the same thing as the girl from, from, uh, Fairmont.
Yes, sir.
But now when they get two years and they're at a high school, somebody has done a lot of work. That, that's, that's, that's a lot of work to do that in two years and be at a regular high school. But there is some going on.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we will move on. Uh, Dr. Carr, what's next? None other than Mr. Carrier is saying it.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good evening, uh, Dr. Williamson, Dr. Emanuel and board members. My name is Mark Smith and I'm the principal at the Robinson County Career Center. We are a shared time center, uh, focused on career technical education. And our program area of focus is trade and industry. Um, we house whole courses from masonry one all the way to automotive, uh, drafting, architectural drafting, um, uh, just plain. drafting, just plane drafting, network engineering, cybersecurity. So we offer a host of classes for our students in this county. And when I say shared time center, we get students from all five high schools coming together at one spot. The cost of having all of our courses at each high school would be unsustainable. It just couldn't happen. So that's why we have our shared time center approach. Just to share a few numbers with you, first semester we had, let me also say that we have CCP courses on campus as well. We have firefighter, we have pharmacy technician, we have HVAC, and we also have law and justice. And those are housed, those are taught by the RCC instructors. So first semester, we had a total of 289 students. 258 were PSRC students and 31 were CCP students, which gave us a total of 289. This semester, we have 198 PSRC students and 36 CCP students for a total of 234 students. So we've had a total this year of 523 total students on our campus. We have offered, students have earned 200 credentials and/or certifications this year on campus. That's 38% of our students have earned those credentials or certifications. In our courses, there are chances to earn multiple certifications. So NCCER courses, which are taught in our core sustainable course, they can earn multiple certifications. But our OSHA-10 is our biggest NCCER certification that is earned. I'm also proud to say that our state assessments this year, we have, we have been at 80% proficiency on our state assessments and our proof of learning and performance-based learning. We have had 93% of our students to pass. Another big thing that I'm proud of is that this year, we were able to send 29 students to our Skills USA State Conference in Greensboro. And out of those 29, we did have two students to win the state of North Carolina cybersecurity competition, and they will be participating at the National Skills USA Leadership Conference in Greensboro, excuse me, in Atlanta at the end of the month. And so, we're very proud of that. And so, that's just a quick synopsis of the Career Center.
You like the Career Center, don't you?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I love going down there, just watching what they do. It's just some smart kids. Are you still building that house each year?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Anyone have any questions, comments? Mr. Brewer?
Mr. Smith, with the new school foundation being built, what is, what is your expectations with the new school and as far as staffing needs and all of those requirements? Do you feel comfortable we're going to be okay with that, or is that something we need to, need to be looking at?
I feel confident we're going to be fine as far as the staffing needs are concerned. I know we're getting the drone, we'll be adding a drone class as well as culinary classes as well. So I don't think staffing, I don't think, I don't foresee staffing as being the issue at all. Fortunately enough, I have a staff that those guys enjoy doing what they do. So I don't anticipate losing any of my staff. So I think we'll be just fine.
So we're still, we're still doing the auction for the house?
Yes.
Each year, okay.
Yes, sir. We just have to finish it off, finish it up.
Okay. So when, when this new, thank you for, for being here, and I appreciate all of the hard work that you're doing. And there's a lot of, there's definitely a lot of good, good things coming from the Career Center. And we're certainly excited about the, the new high school that's, that's being built. That's going to be, that's going to be life-changing for, for some of our students. And at one of our previous meetings, they talked about the fact that they want to increase the, the enrollment by, by quite a bit at the, the new, new Career Center. Is, I'm hoping that, that there, there, the, the student population that, that we have there, do, do we have any students there at the Career Center that's, that may be better suited for RAS or LAP, or is every, or all the students there because they want to be there rather than, than being sent? And I'm asking that question because it's going to be, it's going to be vital for, at our new, new facility. There's going to be many, many visitors over a long period of time. It's going to be coming from all over the state that want to see this place. And it's going to be a, a different dynamic than, than what we have now. And just, and the reason I'm mentioning this is because I want us to start getting into that, that groove of, of preparation, because it, it may be some, some shift in, in culture for the entire district. And this is not just a question for, for you, Mr. Smith, but just for the board as a, as a whole and, and the district as a whole.
Well, we, we have students that, by and large, they're there because they want to be there. The base schools do a great job of making sure they send students. So by and large, we have students that want to be there. I can't say that all of them want to be there, but I can say that once they get there, we got them. So we're RAS, we're LAP, we're whatever we need to be to make sure those students are successful. And the mindset with us has changed, has started changing as soon as Dr. Williamson said that the school was going to be built. We've been talking to our staff about making sure that will of learning is something that we're, we're conscious of every single day, that we take advantage of every single moment of instruction that we have. So you can bring on whoever you want to. We'll be glad to show them around and let them see no longer the best secret in Robinson County, but the best educational experience in Robinson County.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Brewer, and then we have to move on. Our time is almost at the end, and we still have an important part, two parts to go. Ms. Brewer?
Mr. Smith, I wanted to make a comment before you got left the podium. I wanted to say, being, visiting the Career Center and, and watching what's going on and asking questions, I want to say that you and your staff, Mr. Herman and them, is doing a great job going out and advertising and recruiting. And I think that's, that's a factor that we talked about when we first talked about this new school also. You know, how are we going to successfully get this benefit that we are gambling for?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Good job. Yes, sir. Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm so sorry. You used to be Mr. Career Center.
And this is a statement. He has some of the most respected professionals in the industry. And, and I won't, I won't go into all the names. I'm going to say virtually all of them came there, of course, because they wanted to. And not only do they have credentials, but they, they have a high level, level of admiration and respect within the state of North Carolina and beyond.
They know what they're doing.
That applies to, I would say the majority, if not 100%.
Yes, sir.
That.
You're right. Thank you for those comments. Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you.
And this is the finale, what we've been waiting on. Is this, is this Mr. RAS and Mr. LAP? Well, no, you're not a finale, but you're the semi-final.
Good evening. I'm Matthew Locklear. I'm principal at LAP and RAS. For those of you who don't know what LAP and RAS represents, I'm going to give you an overview of the programs. Before I do that, I would like to introduce the school to you like I do to the students. Our adaptive mascot is the phoenix. The phoenix represents our students very well for the fact that a phoenix is a mythical bird, for those who don't know. And the thing that makes it unique is that when a phoenix dies, the body burns up into, turns to ashes and a baby burn, baby bird is born out of those ashes. Now, that applies to our students because many of them are written off at their school, whether they come from LAP or RAS. LAP's, you know, kids somewhat might not make it, and RAS kids are ones that principals, for the most part, don't want on campus because they cause so much trouble. To us at LAP, we believe that it's a chance for them to have a new start and to rise out of the ashes. So let's start with RAS. RAS starts for Robinson Alternative School. This is a program for the sixth through 12th graders that have been behaving issues through the school year and at risk of being long-term suspended. Therefore, to keep them from sending them home for the remainder of the year, they're put to further education in the RAS program for a period of time. While the RAS students are at our campus, they are isolated in a small group of students, where we develop program to deal with not only their behavior issues, but also their social emotional needs. The guidance counselor, social worker, SRO and myself, all play a part in meeting with students to change their way of thinking and to help them see how to become positive, more positive in their schooling. We've seen a success, the majority of students that have returned to the base school in the first semester this year. The ones that we did send back, I have only heard of a select few that still have behavior issues. And as the ones who are still there this semester, majority of them have not had any kind of behavior issues since they've been there. And we also had 99 students that we serve at RAS this year. As far as LAP, LAP is the Learning Acceleration Program. It is designed to allow high school students who are behind on the high school credits to get additional courses so that they can graduate with their cohort. The reason we need LAP is not only to help our students' graduation rate for each year, but to provide students with opportunity to correct their mistakes they had previous in high school. Many of the LAP students fall into one of three categories. Either they were academic issues, behavior issues, or attendance issues. However, as a senior year gets closer, many of them won't help in order to get their high school diploma and start thinking about high, life after high school. LAP gives them that opportunity so that they can not only graduate, but have a chance to further education or enter, or enter the workforce. If you look at the handout I gave you, it's actually the demographics we've had at LAP this year. We served 66 students altogether just for LAP. 52 of those stayed in the program for the second semester, and 51 of those will get their high school diploma either the regular time or during the summer session. And I've also been told at least four of the students who returned their first semester will also graduate with their cohort. Of the ones who have been at LAP, over half of them are planning on now attending community college, trade school, or joining the military. Therefore, thanks to LAP, the public schools of Robinson County has an additional 55 students that will be graduating instead of being high school dropouts and now have a more positive outlook in LAP. Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I, I have a comment, and the comment is, thank you for what you do. And like you said, I, I like your analogy of the phoenix. It's, it's a second chance for those children. You would be shocked, I know that you are, this is your first year there?
Yes, ma'am.
Administrator, you would be shocked to know that the children in the past, that it saved, and I hope it will continue. You, you're doing a great job. I've heard so many people brag about you, so I'm proud of you. You'd be shocked at the children it saved, and hopefully it will continue to save children, that they can graduate, stay in school, be at RAS or LAP, whatever, either program, I think is very valuable. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And thank your staff. You have some dedicated staff that have been there for years and years and years.
They're awesome. They're awesome. Some of the best ones I've worked with.
Yeah, they've taken the hits too, but they, they know how to stand, stand the test of time.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody have any comments? We're going to stand where we are in place and take a stretch break. Please do not leave because we need your attendance desperately. Thank you, sir. Great job. We're going to stand in place and take a stretch break, and then we're going to continue. Take about a two-minute stretch break, and then we're going to continue our program.[1464.33]
You ready?
You may begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Emanuel, Superintendent Williamson, and board members. I'm Alicia Mansfield, the district's English Language Arts Supervisor. I am going to share information now about the Common Lit 360 curriculum pilot that began this semester in our high school English courses. As mentioned at our last curriculum meeting, Common Lit 360 is a high school English curriculum that supports our goal of providing rigorous grade-level instruction that is both vertically aligned through all four grade levels and consistently implemented across all high schools. The resources available to teachers include unit plans, lesson plans, student reading materials, presentation slide decks, vocabulary resources, and grammar resources. The individual lessons contain options for teachers to either assign the curriculum digitally or use paper and pencil. In addition, the curriculum provides scaffolds and supports for our multilingual learners and our EC students in the regular classroom. Within the curriculum, units are organized around a topic, which is supported by the Science of Reading for Secondary Students. Units vary in the genres of text that they use and in the culminating writing tasks that are assigned with explicit instruction in high school writing. While many of the units are organized around shorter passages, this evening, we also have copies of the novels that are included in the curriculum available for you to review in the back. With regard to assessments, Common Lit 360 provides unit assessments aligned to the English standards that provide data on whether students have met the learning goals outlined in that particular unit. This data should be used to identify and address student gaps in learning and to plan for students who need additional challenges. In addition, as a significant part of this implementation, our district has been administering an assessment series that includes standards-aligned pre-test and a mid-semester test. Next week, our students in all courses should begin their post-tests, which will provide actionable data for both teachers and instructional leadership teams as we approach the English Two end-of-course exam and final exams. At this time, we will hear from our high school principals.
So I'm going to ask our panel up here some questions to help us talk about what has happened with the pilot thus far. So first, I want to ask, how has the curriculum positively impacted your work as instructional leader in your building?
So for me, it's positively impacted my work as an instructional leader because now going in to the classroom, I can interact with the curriculum as the teacher is doing it. So before, previously, you know, we'd have the lesson plans that would be available inside the classroom, but now, whether I have my laptop or whether I have my iPad, I can pull up that lesson, look at the different components that are supposed to be introduced in the lesson, and be able to give that teacher feedback if there is a portion of the lesson that may be missed or that we need to highlight in order for the students to actually grasp the standard.
Being from the, having a math background, English is always, you know, one of those things that I can't pop off like I do in the side of the math room classroom. So this curriculum has took the guessing work out of what teachers are teaching inside the classroom for me. Now I can go and pull up Common Lit and know what teachers should be teaching, and I don't have to worry about whether it is standard-aligned, I don't have to worry about whether it's rigorous, I already know all that's in place. And along with the Common Lit program, we were provided a pacing guide from Ms. Alicia that really helps me so I know, regardless of what week I go in, that I can go in and take this Common Lit program and know exactly where teachers should be at that given time.
Fairmont High School was the first high school in the district to pilot Common Lit back in the fall. Four of my six teachers in English were new to the country and new to our school this year, so they were spending a great amount of time harvesting materials, and what Common Lit has done is laid it there for them. I can sum it up in two words, it's allowed me to hold, it's allows for consistency and accountability inside our building. And instead of finding materials, they're internalizing and studying them in preparation to prepare for their classrooms.
Just kind of reiterate what everybody else is saying. It's brought continuity to the English classes also. As Mr. Barton was just saying, I have very high English teachers that have been teaching for years than I have just, only taught like one or two years. So that continuity, so going from class to class is evident. Also, a lot of times, it was hit and miss lessons. Teachers maybe didn't like that curriculum, or didn't like that question, or didn't like that era, so they wanted to go through and scan over that to go to something they were more comfortable with. Now that's not, that's no longer seen in classrooms, and common assessments are the norm now rather than any exceptions as a boy in the past.
So how it's impacted my work as an instructional leader, it's allowed me to be data-driven instruction-specific. I've been able to actually use the assessment data in my data meetings to actually pull that, look at subgroups, look at the trends, and look at the data that's before me for each one of my teachers. We were actually able to do the final post-assessment, and I can honestly say that the data mirrors what it's supposed to. If you look at Class Words, Common Lit, you look at check-ins, EOCs, it mirrors, it mirrors it all. And so with those assessment pieces, we'll be able to take those to our summer planning and be able to even plan even more for the post-assessment. They are rigorous, they are on grade level, and I'm pleased to say that we were at over 80% for our students, which is pretty good for the first assessment, first post-assessment they did, but it just has allowed you to use that data to be very intentional when it comes to planning with your English teachers. And they can do common planning and work together and have the same language because they're able to talk about the same platform.
Okay, for Lomerton, it makes data-driven instruction a simplifier because it makes data meetings and grade-level planning meetings more efficient. So at Lomerton, I'm going to give credit where credit is due. We got specialty areas feature administrator, and Mr. Zach Jones is assigned to our English because he's specialty is English. So in those meetings, Mr. Zach has English meetings with his teachers, and he can drill down for class-level data sets to, for class-level data, or he can break it down to individual data sets for students. And when we walk into classrooms, this teacher's going to be doing the same thing as this teacher, so you don't have to worry about why is this teacher here and why is this teacher there? And often, it's teachers and just, not just teachers, but everybody likes to do what's happy, what they love the most. So sometimes you'll get a teacher that gets stuck on something they enjoy doing, but with Common Lit, it's already map dot form, so there's no stopping here, you just keep moving as you go on. And granted, you're going to have some students may get behind, but you can go back and reteach that, everything's mapped out for you with Common Lit.
We'll go back this way. So, second question, how has the curriculum impacted student learning, and what is the change we see in our learners?
So students are reading, writing, and speaking and listening more, often with standard-aligned purpose. Students are engaging with different types of, more different types of genres of literature and as well as more informational texts at Lomerton High School.
Our students are taking the text to an advanced level by actually critiquing and doing things like Socratic seminars, they're doing debates, they're taking the text and enriching, using it for enrichment inside the classroom, and they're writing, and they're all reading more, and they enjoy the text. So I'm happy to say that our students actually enjoy the text, and you can see that love of reading. We discussed that love of reading earlier. This also aligns with the Common Lit because when texts that are chosen, the students are actually engaged, they find that love for reading.
The curriculum ensures that all students are receiving the same quality of instruction. Our learners are taking more accountability into education through paired learning, independent assignments, and grade-level instruction, and grade-level. Grade-level work, basically, my fault.
It's forcing our students to struggle, and too often, our students haven't struggled inside their classrooms. I believe if you want to prepare for a marathon, you need to prepare, I mean, to run a marathon, you need to prepare for a marathon, not a 5K. So when I walk into classrooms, I was meeting with a teacher earlier this week, we were discussing some benchmark data, and she said that her students were complaining about the complexity of the curriculum. And when she told them what's happening at every school in the district, it's not just Fairmont, that kind of stopped some of that complaining. So I like to hear kids complaining, not that they're not interested, but this is rigorous with the assessments that the state requires, it was so rigorous. So it's definitely preparing our students for what they want to see.
It has positively impacted student learning one way is, I don't have to worry about whether what students are reading in the classroom, whether it's on grade level. I know that students through Common Lit are reading on grade level, or the materials that's been presented to them is on grade level. Student engagement has been like an increase because students get to enjoy a variety of text from the different genres, whether it be poetry, informational text, or novels.
And to reiterate one point about the diverse texts that the students get to read, we know about the diversity that exists in our county, and so it allows them to read texts that represent all different types of cultures. And with that, also, the platform allows them to interact with the text a little bit more by responding to questions that are in line with the text and on the computer, so that way it prepares them for assessments of things that they have to take later on on the computer.
So that is the last question from myself, but does anybody on the board have any questions?
I have, yes, ma'am, I have a comment. Guys, have you had any complaints from teachers saying, this rigid scripted curriculum, or not scripted, but laid-out curriculum is stifling my creativity? Have you had complaints from teachers, and you know, be honest, everybody changes hard for some people?
I had one in the beginning. She talked about the fact that, you know, some of the kids were lower than others, and she was going too fast and everything else, and you know, she wanted to, with a scripted curriculum at high school, we've never had one. So at first, everybody wanted to read basically verbatim, and like when I was telling her, I said, well, you got to, and me and Dr. Emanuel, I mean, not, we actually had this conversation one day, you know, you got to make it not only your own, but you got to make it for the only of your students. And if you're going in and just read the curriculum every day and just read out the assignments, then you're doing a disservice to the curriculum and you're a disservice to your students. And that's what her and I had to talk about is the fact that, yes, this kid might need a little bit more help in this, but there's time built in that you got to sit there, and but we got to go through the curriculum, but you got to go through and meet each individual needs of those children also. If there's weekend, whatever, we still got to set time away from that, and we still got to go through the curriculum though. But she's on board now, so, but like I said, it's really helped the lower teachers that just came in who don't necessarily have a great English background, that are just coming into education, it's given them a guide to go through.
I think, you know, I think the material, just listening to you guys, you seem satisfied with it, it seems to be something laid out for you. I think probably the problem would come in if the district said every one of you guys have to be on the same work, the same pace, the same time, and you had somebody monitoring to making sure every one of you were doing the same thing at the same time, like the e-c curriculum. I think you would probably have issues with that, but I don't see a problem doing the program as you guys are doing it individually to individual schools, and you're working on trying to stay up with the pacing. But to have someone watching you saying, you got to be here, everybody the same time, same day, same thing, you would probably have some issues, I think, maybe, maybe not. Okay, is this the program that talk about funding, and this is what the board would be more interested in, the funding of this program?
Can Mr. Brooks, he has one thing he wants to say real quick, can he say something real quick?
I was just going to say, what our teachers more, they've been, I think they got comfortable doing it a certain way, and you just get comfortable when you change something up. First, the buy-in wasn't there, but as we went on, they started buying into it. With our benchmark scores, if they're indicative of what's going to happen on the test, we've gone up in our benchmarks, they're higher than what we've done on the EOC, so we're hoping things are moving in the right direction. But where our test scores were at, there's no way we could hurt it by doing something new like this, and I think it's going to be a good deal for us at Lomerton High School. And this is only one semester, we just started in February, so once we roll this out for an entire year, I mean, you got a better chance of everything going straightforward.
Dr. Carr, back this winter, yourself, Dr. Williamson, me, and Mr. Barton, several others were there, but we went into the classrooms at Fairmont, and the students were engaged, the teachers were engaged, they were staying with the curriculum, there was interaction with students helping other students to get the answer to the problem, and it was just good all around. And I said that since I came on this board, that, and I'm just using elementary schools for an example, but if a child's doing something in the second grade at East Robinson, they should be doing the same thing at Pembroke Elementary. And what happens, and what I've seen happen, that when we weren't on this curriculum, that a student, and we know in Robinson County, children transfer, and you lose them, because if I'm teaching something at East Robinson, and they go to Pembroke Elementary, they may be teaching something totally different and, or be ahead, and they lose that week or two weeks that they were supposed to be learning, and they never got it. So that affects them when they get to middle school and high school. But I appreciate what each one of you're doing and the teachers in the classroom. And Dr. Barton had some that's from out of the country, and you could still understand what they were saying. I had to listen good to a couple of them, but it was still good. And to see that interaction with the students, it just, myself, it does my soul good to see stuff like that happen.
And as you heard the principal say, they're all adapting, that's part of what we've talked about, teachers adapting those lessons to meet the needs of their students. And so that's what we saw that day, is a teacher that has adapted and molded that lesson to the needs of those students in that classroom.
Pretty much what they were saying, but my question had been, were teachers against this, or for this? And from what I'm hearing, they've accepted doing this program pretty much, you know, after you got it started, which that's great. The other part, if, does somebody have a comment? And the other part was, I've always said, we need to have what Mr. Randy just said, the same program in every school, instead of one school doing this, one school doing that, and this is, if this is another way we can get that same thing going across, again, if there's teacher acceptance, because we know that's important, you might have some that disagree, but then you work the program, as you've said, you've done that, but to have the same thing in every class, we need to work on doing that in every high school and every subject.
I was just going to mention with the teachers and the buy-in part, and I've been having a conversation with the teacher that has been teaching English, I think about 14, 15 years, and she said that she enjoyed it more so because it made her, in a sense, come alive again, because now you have to kind of go back in and read into the lesson and internalize it, and figure out what things are important in that lesson, and then what scaffolds do you need to put in to add so to make sure that students can grasp it. And it goes back to what Mr. Brooks said earlier, is that we have great teachers all around the county, but sometimes we just get too comfortable, and so then our talents don't really show, and I think this is pulling that back out of the good teachers that we already have.
Anybody else have a comment? Ms. Ginger?
Ms. Sinclair, just addressed, and I think everybody has addressed really the question that I have, which has been an underlying challenge in my mind, and I think all of us as educators and been in the classroom, the differing levels of proficiency of students in terms of their reading, in terms of their writing and verbal expression. You've got multiple levels of students at all of those points of communication at any given time in any given classroom. But what I'm hearing is the strength of common literacy is that it does help provide insight and a way to go to address all the varying levels of, all the levels of communication. It's obviously multifaceted, and we know too that students don't all come in at the same level, they're, you can't put an number on it, it's, there are a lot of variances there, and I think, I think all of them have addressed it to my satisfaction, that this is possible.
Ms. Trey?
I know this is still fairly new, but I'm just going to ask the question, based on your professional opinion, do you see any changes that need to be made with this comment, or are we headed in the right direction?
By the nods, I think they're agreeing that we ain't going in the right direction, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the training, now before, I'm sorry, before, we had some comments about the other program that we went in it too fast without the went in it too fast without the training, so do we need more? I haven't heard about the training. What, what, did y'all just jump into it, or did you have training first?
Part of our implementation is training that's provided by the curriculum from Common Lit 360. So we rolled it out with how to implement a reading lesson, a writing lesson, and then data analysis for, or leader toolkit for the leaders. That training was held during the day for all of our building leaders. Next year, we have more training planned on differentiation, which is, I do believe is a concern for quite a few of our teachers, is how to address the needs of students who are below, significantly below grade level, and training in supporting multilingual learners, which is a big concern across our district as we want our students to be successful, and in scaffolding instruction to support those students who may be just a few grade levels behind.
Okay, we'll talk about costs at another time. Go ahead, Mr. Bro.
Another area we really haven't heard much about, where does our students stand with, with these, with their understanding of these curriculums? Are they motivated, excited about them, or do they see it working? And, and if they do or don't, what is the differences across the county? Is they, is we uniform in, in pretty much the way everybody feels or understands about our curriculums?
Well, a good teacher has to motivate their kids, Mr. Brewer. I wish I could say that everybody comes into school ready and excited to learn, but they don't always do that. But I will say with, with certainty, because I have a student that's in high school as well at Purnell Swett. I know what she's doing in English right now in her, in her classroom, is the same things that my students have been exposed to at Fairmont High School. And that's one of the issues, I think, with a county this size, is we can't always, before something like this, we couldn't always promise that students at all schools are getting the same opportunities. Teachers at Swett may have been there longer, had more experience, and then I walked into a school, like I said, I have four brand-new English teachers to the country, but I can guarantee that my student in English two at Purnell Swett is getting the same thing that's happening at, at Fairmont High School, maybe some tweaks based on the needs of the students and the content expertise of the teacher, but I'm not worried about what my teacher found on the internet to teach and what his teacher is different, because it's not, because they have the same, the same foundation. We haven't spoke to internalization, but a good teacher has to internalize the lesson they want to teach, and that's based on the needs of the students, and then how, and, and the pace and where they're at. Something might happen at my school that stops instruction, get a day or two behind that at Swett or another school. And, and that all comes back to, you know, what's happening inside the building, so I feel with, with good certainty that that's happening at, at all of our schools.
And then just to add to that part, I feel like in interactions with students and kind of discussing their grades, they appreciate the opportunity of the delivery of the curriculum and how they can go back and they can complete work and redo work and things inside the platform, so they appreciate that fact. Whereas before, you know, you might do the work on paper and pencil, and now you turn it in, and then you may not get it back for a while. So they're getting quicker feedback, so allows them to kind of adjust things that they need to, to get better grades.
What courses does this tool, this Common Lit 360 apply to?
English.
So all the Englishes, and how long have we been using it?
It's February.
Okay, since February. Okay, I appreciate all of the, the, the positive narratives. I look forward to seeing, you know, our E O G scores next year for English one through four jump. So I'm anticipating some good, some good scores coming out of this. Thank you.
Anybody, any more board members about, Dr. Carr, we in a dilemma here. Are we going to go through each subject and the panel's going to review each subject? Okay, what, what is the plan for covering the rest of the agenda? Okay, can we move it quickly? And I'm looking at where you have early college ninth grade cohort, hasn't he already addressed some of that, said we won't have to do that? And the C T, can we sort of speed up this? Because some people trying to get back to their school, like Jason, for a program, let's see if we can speed it up. And so I do not want to lose my audience, so see if we can speed this up. And I really appreciate what everyone has done. Please don't think that you're not important.
Good afternoon, good evening, Dr. Manu, Dr. Williamson, board members. My name's Melissa Nguyen, and I'm the district's math supervisor. I want to thank you for the opportunity to present our Math One curriculum for middle and high schools. Next year, throughout the entire district, our eighth grade students will be taking Math One. We prepared our students this year by having the seventh grade students take a seventh, eighth grade accelerated math class with Eureka curriculum. These students receive their seventh grade math standards along with eighth grade math standards necessary to be successful in Math One. Next year, in eighth grade, we will be using the Eureka Math Squared curriculum. So our district will have all K eight students taking Eureka squared. Our eighth grade math teachers will be getting their initial training with the curriculum and the platform during the beginning of the school year, during those beginning teacher workdays. But they will have access to view the curriculum before the end of the school year, along with the year of a glance pacing that they'll have throughout the entire summer to prepare. Why move Math One to middle school? By having Math One in middle school, it opens up future scheduling to allow more high school students to, to take those more, those advanced math Level Four courses during high schools that's necessary for our graduates to be more successful in colleges and universities throughout the state. Math One in high school will have a year at a glance pacing guide that will implement the free open up resources that will be available to our teachers online and to our instructional leaders throughout our buildings. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions regarding Math One? You satisfied everybody's curiosity, darling? Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Emanuel, Dr. Williamson, and board members. So I will be discussing history. So in history, we have some new graduation requirements. Oh, let me say my name, I'm Camicia Scrivens, social studies supervisor. So with the new graduation requirements, if you see the chart that I have posted, you see an old sequence versus a new sequence. So the old sequence was prior to 2021, and now we're in the new sequence. So as you can see, we had world history, civics, economics, American history one, and then American history two. So the new sequence, the only class that stays the same is ninth grade world history. In tenth grade, they'll take civic literacy, and then in eleventh grade, they'll take the full American history. And then in twelfth grade, we have a new course, economic and personal finance. You may hear me say E P F, and when I say E P F, I'm referring to economics and personal finance. So the reason why this is important is because our first cohort of students that have to graduate with E P F is this year. So our 2024 graduates will be the first ones who have to have E P F to graduate. Next year will be our first cohort, cohort of students who have to have the entire new sequence. So they will have to have all four classes. This process started in 2021, kind of like a staggered, so that that twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two students could have world history, civic literacy, they may have a few, and then 2023, but then making sure that by 2025, those students all have all of the sequences. Okay, and so on the corner, it's a little small, it talks about how N C D P I has discovered that last year our students in North Carolina have performed the highest when it comes to financial literacy. And so that is the purpose for this. This is very important because I know, I wish I would have had a course like this in twelfth grade to help me before I went off to college. So this E P F course is a course that teaches them about money, taxes, interest rates, credit cards, loans, and of course, this is the time when they turn eighteen, this is the time where those credit cards start going out to them. So they're learning a lot so they can be more literate than I can say I was at that time. So this is the new graduation requirements for students. And once again, this year will be our first group of twelfth graders that have to have E P F to graduate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? You know, many people do not know how to write a check. You know that? Or sign, well, yeah. Thank you so much, darling.
Next, next, we will take the next few minutes to discuss curriculum matters related to the federal and state Holocaust Education Acts. In May of 2020, the U S Congress passed the Never Again Act, which established a dedicated federal fund through the U S Holocaust Memorial Museum to provide teachers with the resources and training necessary to teach students the important lessons of the Holocaust. In November of 2021, the North Carolina Legislature passed the Gisella Abramson Holocaust Education Act, which states that, quote, "Knowledge of the Holocaust is essential to provide students with the fundamental understanding of geography, history, and political systems necessary to make informed choices on issues that affect individuals, communities, states, and nations." As a direct outcome of this legislation, the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, in close collaboration with the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust, has developed resources and curriculum on the Holocaust and genocide for English and social studies. Recently, N C D P I has clarified the expectation that Holocaust education is to be integrated into both social studies and English courses from grade six through grade twelve, with the exception of the previously mentioned economics and personal finance course. In order to comply with this state legislation, our office is adjusting our grades six through twelve curriculum and pacing for English and social studies using the Holocaust resources previously mentioned. In addition, we will be conducting training on Holocaust education for teachers and building leaders this year. Thank you. Any? Any questions? If there are no questions, next we will hear from science.
Before, may I? And this may be to Dr. Carr and everybody. So the L education curriculum really has addressed this, so we're a little bit ahead of this legislation because of that curriculum.
Yes, sir. In eighth grade, we have a module on the Holocaust and on, focused around upstanders in the Holocaust, which also mirrors the materials that we are receiving from the North Carolina Council on the Holocaust and will substitute. And in addition, in tenth grade, we currently have a genocide unit in English two, and that will serve that purpose as well.
Thank you. Henry?
This material coming in hardback, is it virtual? Is it both?
It is, the, it's different, different resources for English and social studies. The English curriculum is unit plans that have been written for, and they're alternate, there's one, a single one, and then an alternate unit that have been written for use in grades six through twelve. So there's one for each grade level, and they have been vetted by teachers and by students, and they have also been evaluated for developmentally appropriate information, considering that the education starts in sixth grade.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With the superintendent's permission, we'll do it now. You, we're finished, this is something we're gonna do, the board. We're gonna make a motion, make a motion that the Holocaust education legislation be put on our board agenda for information the next. And this is the, we can vote as a committee to put it on our board agenda the next time. And the following people can vote, Henry, John Simmons, William Gentry, and Crystal Monroe, which Crystal's not here, Linda. All right, I make a motion that, I can't make a motion. I need a motion, I didn't mean to say, I, I need a motion to put this on the agenda for information the next board meeting. All right, the motion was made, somebody write it down, say, when they, the motion was made by Mr. Henry and second by Mr. Gentry to put it as the information item on the next board agenda, just for information, Holocaust legislation. Now. It has some hazard over here. Okay, now, thank you. And the superintendent told me I could do that, didn't you? Of the vote, thank you. Those in favor of it, raise your hand. Those not in favor of it, I think that's the whole committee. Motion carries, thank you. They're educating me here. Thank you. So we'll be on the next agenda, superintendent said he would take care of it, right? All right, now the next, what's next?
Science. Good evening, Dr. Emanuel, Dr. Williamson, and board members. We're gonna give you just a brief update on science. As you remember, in 2023, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction adopted new science standards, the next generation standards, and we will be implementing them this year. So there will be some training that will take place over the summer. We will start with biology in July, and then they will have training over the summer, and then we will continue that throughout the year. And then later in August, we will bring back all of our K twelve science teachers and provide training for them as well. The shift will be from being kind of a consumer of content to actually as a student rolling up your sleeves and having to apply science. So we will be working with our teachers through professional development to make sure they are prepared to kind of deliver science in a little bit of a different manner. And so you probably will be hearing some buzz about our science standards this summer. Questions?
Yes, ma'am. What, what, what will we use for textbooks, resources?
So right now, we're working with our Sandhills Region Educational Consortium, so it is not going to be a textbook. They're working on an unpacking document where they will be providing some resources, and then as a RISA, we will start looking at kits just to see exactly what we do need, because it will be more of an application base, so there might be more materials that teachers need to run a lab per se, as opposed to a, a textbook.
Now, this is a superintendent question. What about money? Do we have any money to buy resources?
Yes. In fact, we've already ordered the resources for that. I do want to add, though, we believe we, again, we are ahead because of the Eureka curriculum and L, which are both applied curriculums, so it will not be new to our students.
Does that need to go on the board?
No.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
To our teachers, is that gonna take, is, are we gonna extend the opportunity for those that will, want to volunteer for summer to take, take that, or is that, is that something we're gonna roll out in August to everyone? And they try to teach it and learn?
Right.
And pick it up at the same time?
Biology will start in July. They will be paid a stipend for that training because it is important that they do get that ahead of time. They will be trained in more of a model type of teaching so that they can actually go in, and like we said, model labs. Our other teachers, they will already be back for school prior to the kids coming back, and that's when we will start that training. And then we will have a train the trainer model, so it might be an academic coach, it might be a lead science teacher. We will have people in each building that can help lead that work, as well as Susan Miller Hendricks, our science supervisor, who's at the family engagement night right now, facilitating, I believe, balloon rockets for the family engagement night, which is why she's not here. Yeah.
Any comments, questions, Mr.?
So the, the teachers in biology will receive training this July, and they'll be paid for that? But in the other subjects, it'll be sort of on-the-job training?
Right, they will already be back, they'll be part of their contracted hours already, like they'll be already here, I think it's like August sixteen, so they're already on pay when they come back for that training.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Ginger.
We, we've had a, a number of family engagement nights, which all of which I've had anything to do with have been tremendously exciting and engagement is, is the apt word. I guess if I have a question, and I, I think that's absolutely wonderful, but how, how do you see those experiences and those events lending itself, or lending as a whole, to the onset of this, of this new movement with all of the new lab equipment, you know? I see students already being well-versed in not having to learn specifics about how to handle certain equipment, devices, and that kind of thing. So it's, it sounds, it looks like, it sounds like a win-win.
Yeah, absolutely. So tonight, the family engagement event is actually about rocking the test, which is where the balloon rockets are coming in. where the balloon rockets are coming in. But I think what you're starting to see is this embedding of science standards and content across the board. Like Dr. Williamson said, we have so much science content in our L curriculum. We, we use math and science, we have the STEM van. So you're starting to see science not as this standalone subject, but you're starting to see it integrated across the board, which is exactly what you want for reinforcement. Any other questions?
Uh, do we have any comments, questions on the board? Thank you so much, such a smart lady. Now, the Herman, Mr. Herman.
Good evening, Dr. Emanuel.
Good evening.
Dr. Williamson, other board members. So we're just gonna share a few things about career and technical education that's happening not just in the high school, but in the middle school. So we've started this year implementing the computer science in all of the middle schools, all sixth grades, I'll say that. We had, of course, some schools that are not considered middle schools that house sixth grade, so we have also placed someone in those schools to teach that computer science program there. We will ha- continue that as, as we go along because there is gonna be the computer science graduation requirement, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So some of the things that, that, that we're really proud of, that we've really been working on and trying to continue and will continue next year is our C T E showcase. C T E showcase now is gonna be two times a year. In the fall, we will have our eighth grade students go to that so that they can see all the hands-on activities that Career and Technical Education actually puts out there because they will start the registration process early on in the second semester. So we want to get them to see the C T E showcase prior to Christmas break. Then in the spring, we will bring our sixth grade students through a C T E showcase so they can get a feel of what's going on. And just got information this week that the state had mandated that all seventh graders have a career development plan before seventh grade. Now they're sort of shifting that, and it's possibly gonna be for eighth grade. So we do know that at least by eighth grade, somewhere in that pathway, they should have that career development plan. Our Career Expo is another focus that we have because we were doing that for our 11th and 12th grade students, and that's held in the fall. That is an opportunity for students to see what kind of jobs are in our area because, again, statistical that data shows that approximately 74 to 76% of the students that graduate from the public schools of Robinson never leave Robinson County. Therefore, we want them to be ready for whatever is in our area, or at least in driving distance in our neighboring counties. Credentials, I think Mr. Smith already mentioned about credentials at the Career Center, but we have credentials in just about all of our programs, the base school and the Career Center, and that number is increasing drastically. Those credentials are very, very important because most of those are industry-recognized credentials, and that's what industry is pushing for, and that's what they are asking the state to continue that program. Our courses have a long needed to be switched from just a standard assessment where a student would take a 100 item test, and the State Department is working really, really hard to change all of our programs over to otherwise a credential being the proof of learning or a performance-based measure. Performance-based measure is those students will do a project or capstone project, or otherwise they will have many projects throughout the semester, and they will keep track of that through a portfolio. Okay? Also, Mr. Smith also talked earlier about his students who won at the state competition, they were number one in the state, that is, in our Career and Technical Student Organization, that was the skills. But we also have some other really exciting things that are happening with our Family Consumer Science Group. They went to Greensboro back in March. We had two groups there, two different schools there that came home with first-place awards, and will be competing in the end of June in Seattle, Washington. We have a, in the apparel's class, we have first-place state winner. We also have in the culinary foods division, we've got a young lady that will be competing in Seattle with that. Let me go back and say in the apparel's, non-traditional, even though Ms. Pam back here says it's really not, I think it is because all men can't sew. I happen to be a lucky one, and I can, not bragging on myself, but we started, we re-integrated a apparel's class at Purnell Sweat back in the fall of this school year. And this young man had never had his hands on a sewing machine until second semester in January. He, he started that class in January, he went to the competition in March and won first-place in the state.
Wow.
So that says a lot. That says a lot. And he's the one that will represent North Carolina at the National Conference in Seattle, Washington. So, and then, of course, we have some that are in the hospitality tourism and in, what was the other one, Pam? It was planning, event planning, that's it, event planning. So we've got several people that will be competing on the national level representing North Carolina, not just Robinson County, but North Carolina, and I think that's a lot to be proud of. So, one, the other thing, or the last thing on the list of happening is there is the Career Accelerator Camps. Those camps are the last two weeks in June, and we are steady recruiting students every day and getting students to sign up for that. That's for rising, rising eighth, ninth, and 10th grade. And this five-day camps, there's two weeks of it, there's, they can register for the first week for one camp and the second week for the other camp if they'd like. So we're excited about that. Also, for, for training, just make sure that we're keeping our folks up to speed on what they need. We're having computer science training for high schools and for middle schools. The actual Friday Center is coming down to, to the Career Center to house our training because we have such a large number of teachers that will be trained this summer. And then, of course, we always encourage our staff to go to the Career and Technical Education Summer Conference, which will be held in Winston-Salem in July. And then for those folks, they'll come back and do presentations at our summer jamboree, where all the teachers that either went or did not go will be in special training. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Ma'am, I do, Herman, so again, we're ahead of the state in that with computer science, we rolled it out this year in middle school, so our teachers have already taken a look and working with that curriculum.
Yes, sir.
To our advantage.
Yes, sir. And I think there's about 12 middle school teachers that will be taking additional training this summer for that, and that's code.org program that, that we are offering in the sixth grade.
Will teachers be paid for that training?
They will.
Okay.
As a matter of fact, code.org pays the teachers a stipend for that because they also, not only will they spend a week on the campus at the Career Center, but then they will have to attend four sessions throughout the year, and they are paid for that through code.org.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful. I gotta, um, this may not, this may not necessarily be a question for you, but, um, you know, in a, maybe in the broader context of our, of our district. And this may be happening through D P I, but I was wondering, you know, you're talking about the, the possibility of earning credentials. Do we, is there a tool that we systematically use to track what, to track our students when they graduate and leave?
There is. Every year, we, at least one year out from graduates, that we have to call those graduates, and we find out, are they in school, are they at work, or what is their status at that time? And we report that to, back to the state.
Is it just for C T E or?
That is, that is for C T E concentrator students.
There may be something that counts for students today over here. There may be something that they do because I remember seeing some type of report or something one time with it on it, but I'm not sure. Any comments, questions? Ms. Gentry?
I recall back in the day when I was, first of all, at the Career Center, there were a, a number of corporations that were offering internships to qualified students that met certain criteria, and I think an interview process was part of that, and maybe even an assessment or multiple assessments. P Bot Energy is one that comes to mind. I'll just ask it, has, has that concept grown, increased, or is it about the same as it was, you know, 10 years ago, or?
It is, it has increased and steady increasing, and we're taking that to the next level. Not only are we pushing for internships, but we want them to take them to the next level and start an apprenticeship program with those students.
And so phase two of the Career Center with those service career labs would do that.
Exactly. Exactly. Because our, our goal is to get students prepared for whatever the need is for industry, and we want to get them prepared prior to them graduating. And then as they go out into the workforce, they can go on and maybe if they have to go to the community colleges to receive additional training, then that bill is on the employer, and they can have those degrees debt-free.
Further comments, questions? Thank you so much, Mr. Herman.
Thank you.
Now, do we, what else is on our agenda, summer school schedule?
Yes, the final stretch. So we just wanted to give you a brief reminder of our summer school opportunities. We have several that are going on, very proud of our extended learning opportunities for our students. And on the next two slides, we have listed the locations, so please feel free to stop by and visit some of our camps this summer. So we do have our Read to Achieve Camp, our Migrant Education, Indian Education Program, and then we have our C T E Career Accelerator Camp, which there are actually three camps within that, our multilingual learners camp, credit recovery, and our extended school year camp.
And, I'm sorry, hold on.
Yep, so feel free to come by and visit our camps.
There will be feet, will these be feeding sites as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Question, question, Ms. Craig? Are you, um? Craig, um?
Uh, real quick, I guess this is Dr. Williamson's question. We've heard a lot of people come up today and say there's gonna be training this summer or training next fall. And follow up what Mr. Terry asked, any training that's done this summer, they would be a stipend or would be pay, and then there might be some that's during workdays next fall, they're working then, so that's the pay. Okay? What would be now, also, where are we at now if there's training next fall and spring, and it's after school? So what, what is that situation?
Yes, we still try to provide some stipend unless it's required by the state as a mandate.
Okay, and if we do or have any Saturday training on anything, there would be a stipend or something paid?
If we can budget and have that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Board?
Dr. Dallas, is that, that a schedule already being made to make our teachers aware so it doesn't interrupt their summer vacations or whatever?
As far as our camps or our professional development or both?
Both.
So all of our teachers have the summer camps, in fact, applications have been received, they were, a lot of them were board-approved this week, so they're aware of those dates. The professional development, we're actually trying to fine-tune, most of those dates have already been pushed out, but we're trying to tweak a couple more still, but they will certainly know them the next couple of weeks.
Any more comments, questions?
I want to make a comment, and now it's time to go home. I want to say thank you to this board for your support of the work. We cannot do our jobs with kids are gonna miss learning opportunities. You support us, you support the work, and I want to say, and this staff, want to say thank you so much. And how blessed are we for the staff members and the folks doing the work. They're amazing and just.
He's gonna give you all a day off, it might be Saturday, but he's gonna give you a day off for that. Trey, Mr. Trey has a comment.
I got two things, Dr. Emanuel.
Go for it.
One being, I think congratulations is in order to Terry for being chosen for North Carolina Hunt State Policy Fellows Program as a board member.
No, it's not, I don't want that. Wait, say that again, slowly what he was selected for. Say it again, I missed, you were talking so fast.
I'm gonna yield to the chairman, Dr. Emanuel.
All right, Chairman, what is it he's got now?
I think that we all need to stand and congratulate Dr. Williamson on being State Superintendent of the Year for the region.
And he's gonna be in the running for the state superintendent, period, but there's only seven regions, I understand, is that correct? Eight? Okay.
Tell me again what Terry got, I didn't understand. Wait, there's seven going in, Mr. Trey, I got you back on.
Terry, being a school board member, got chose for the North Carolina Hunt State Policy Fellows Program. Now, see, that's a good achievement for a board member.
What'd you pay him, Mr. Terry? What'd you pay them? No, you deserve it. Anybody, any board member have any comment? I, I want to say a couple of things and then we can hit the road. I really appreciate, now, y'all, this is serious, I appreciate all the board members being here. You know why that I kept aggravating my balls out? Because if there's no curriculum, no teaching and learning, then there will be no need for finance committee. If there was no teaching and learning, there'd be no need for construction committee. If there's no teaching and learning, there'd be no need for anything. So that's why I begged, I pleaded for you to come because, you know, knowing more things about education, teaching and learning children, than when you go to put that line item for that building or that pavement or that, that, you understand solely what it's more about. And I do want to say what Dr. Williams said, this staff is awesome, that means school level and district level. When I get a little bit younger, I want to be just like every one of you, I really do. I really appreciate everybody being here, and I do not apologize for the time because there was time spent well worth being here. Thank you so much.
It's, it's not, mine's just to let everyone know, Mr. Grady Hunt, who was our attorney, his father passed away yesterday. So I just want to let everyone know that.